All right, we're going to call the board. It is rising to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Good evening, everyone. This is our budget workshop.
As you all know, we have -- well, first, I'd like to welcome Mr. Kokak from the town council to us tonight. And as you all know, unfortunately, we've been asked to -- or told to cut an additional $600,000 from our budget. So I'm glad we are here tonight to figure out how we can do that. So, to the board of Dr. Conway. Thank you very much. Administration gathered about a week ago and went through possible cuts, so I'd like to highlight those for you. We offered that list of cuts. The board, of course, has the entire budget to -- if you're perused to reduce or expand as needed. When you look at the worksheet you have in front of you, the second line down, medical insurance, it's a reduction of $131,151. That was due to, if you recall, about four years ago, 2011, we received a rebate from Cigna, I think it was at that point, for about $131,000, $119,000, I think it was. The board did use 100 of that. There was still 19 in the kitty. Of course, we don't accept revenue, so it was at with the town. It's supposed to be used for medical insurance premiums. Additionally, there were additional rebates that came in after that, and then there was one settlement for someone in the state who was working with a lot of different municipalities. So three different sources for that. The one warning I will give with that is that it is -- it would be a reduction to expenses. So when the first bill comes in, we would ask the town for access to those monies and pay the bill with that money. That means that next year, we still have that bucket to fill. So we'd be starting $131,000 lower than our actual cost for this year. We just happen to have some savings that has to be used for medical insurance. And so there would be that $131,000. If I can skip the next one, the unemployment insurance, and the next one, substitute teachers, move down to other supplies and materials, toner. We were able to reduce our toner line item by just about $11,000, which is -- we had toner in the new contract, all the toner is included. But not only all the toner, but most of the printers that we have, we have some specialized printers, that was included as well. But we were able to reduce by that amount. The next is under pupil personnel services, a school psychologist. We had asked for a new position, a full-time position at Skinner Road School. Right now, Skinner Road and Northeast School share a school psychologist. This would put a full-time person at both schools. So we put that in there. Since it is a brand-new position, we would be able to move that to the alliance grant. We had eliminated in the alliance grant a school social worker position for other reasons. And so this would not overburden the alliance grant, wouldn't increase it by much, or increase by anything. The next, unfortunately, is a reduction of three full-time equivalent teachers at Rockville High School. I think Mr. Rocket has identified that that would most likely be, and of course, wouldn't be definite until all the course offerings are -- selections are in by the students. They're actually in now, and so they're figuring out how many sections they have. But right now, it looks like that could be a special educator, a world language teacher, and a social studies teacher. In Verden Center Middle School, that is seventh-grade team. So next year, there would be three sixth-grade teams, two seventh, and two eighth. Mr. Harrison, while not thrilled with that reduction, is looking at the last half-full. He's indicated that he has seven special educators, and now we'll have seven teams. So each special educator, rather than going between teams, will be assigned to one team. He has indicated that he has four world language teachers, and so each world language teacher would be assigned to a team for the two grade-seven teams and the two grade-eight teams. So he's making sure that he's having the best of all worlds. The world language teachers would become full members of the team rather than the small 32 or 37-minute classes. So that's where he's going with that. In Center Road School, replacing non-instructional equipment, that was a small refrigerator and a cop with a nurse's office, and it was blocked this year. And so we absolutely can reduce that. The next was in Lake Street School, a general instruction classroom teacher. That was, if you recall, the board had wanted to fully fund the kindergarten teachers in the local budget. And so in the last reduction, the board took the 1.5 teachers out of Skinner Road and put that back in the alliance grant. This was the last kindergarten teacher that was in local budget, and so this year, we would be putting this back into the alliance grant. So they haven't made it into the local budget yet. The other two that I skipped, as you can see, unemployment compensation, about three inches from the top, that's an additional $60,000. And that would -- that is because we would be eliminating seven more teachers. Out of the 26 reductions, I think 17 or 18 would be unemployed. And so until they find another job, we would be having to pay their unemployment insurance. Substitute teachers, that was also a reduction. This budget, if the board adopts these seven reductions here, this would be a reduction of approximately 7% of our teaching force altogether in the whole budget. And then we would drop that substitute teacher line item also by approximately 7%. So those are the two that were adjusted because of the other reductions, one up and one down. And so I need to turn this over back to you.
Does anybody have anything? Mr. Stansel.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions for Dr. Conway, just for points of clarification. Maybe help me out a little bit as we're going through this budget tonight. When we create a new position, I guess specifically an administrative position, but maybe any position, do we have control over the salary scale for that position?
There's a yes and no to that. No, in terms of the -- if it's a union position, the salaries are set, so you can't bargain with someone and say, "We're going to pay you more than you because your position is more valuable." However, when someone is hired, it depends on the number of years of experience that they've had. Many of our, in fact, most of our contracts indicate that if someone has so many years of experience in another district, that's when they would start on the next step here in our district. However, there are a couple of contracts that say, no matter how many years of experience you have, you are starting on step one. So it's probably, no, we don't have control, and maybe a little bit of control depending on where people are coming from. We don't have to give credit for out-of-state and for private school, appropriate school experience as a teacher.
Thank you. So when we create a new position, we can't -- we literally cannot say, you know, the maximum salary for this position will be X?
Only if it's a non-union position. There are about 35 of those, 30 of those.
Okay, thank you. That's it for right now. Thank you.
Mrs. Art. Could I follow up with Mr. Stansel for a little more clarification? If it's a new position, how is that salary determined?
The new position right now on the table here would be, or has been in discussion, is a school psychologist. That is in the teachers' union. So depending on where that person came in, in the salary schedule, so if they had four years' experience in another district, they would start on wherever it was for our union that people with four years' experience were. We're not a one-to-one in our teachers' contract. It's a little bit different. But so they would come in on step four. If they had a master's degree, they'd start in that salary lane, a PhD. So it's very prescribed if it's a new position.
I was actually thinking of the new position of director of teaching and learning. That's a new position.
That is a new position. Right, it is in the union, however, and the director position is second from the top akin to the middle school principal position. And so in the discussion, certainly, the board will have to make a decision, but they will have to negotiate with the union as to what a director earns. So that's what we've been budgeting at, is where the other director is, director of pupil personnel.
So that $15,000 increase may not actually be a real increase.
I expect that it will be.
I'll tell you, I went when I had to go looking through the budget to find money. I was going looking for ways to save teacher positions, and that was just my way to go at it. And I saw a couple of things that I wanted to ask about, like the HR administrative position in 51123 this year is $50,000. Next year, it's 51111 for $75,000. And I'm wondering if that can't just stay an administrative assistant position and assist Dawn at the town side and combine some responsibilities rather than establishing a new position and increasing it by $25,000?
That would be a discussion from the board. It certainly would not be my recommendation to combine with the town. We've tried that before. I know the board thought that was not --
Well, this would be a little bit different in that there would -- and it's my understanding that the person in that position is working with Dawn now anyway.
Oh, always. We always work with the town. That's correct.
I'm wondering if that's anything that the board wants to talk about or dismiss. I know $25,000 doesn't pay for a teacher. I was adding up places where I thought could restore teaching positions. Okay? Okay, I move to --
I had a discussion before you moved.
Sure.
I think that consolidating services and putting together different organizations, town and school, would be a huge benefit to the taxpayers. And I think it's a good idea to look into it. My concern is that we have to get it all in place. And I understand that she is working, they are working together right now somewhat. But in the back of my mind, I've always thought that that would be a reasonable thing to do. But it would need to be, make sure that every T is crossed and I is dotted, to make sure that the school board's unique HR is handled.
To Laura's point, if we don't do something about the position, then it's now in our budget, and it would be very difficult. I hear what Mrs. Bush is saying. I wonder if, though it wouldn't be appropriate to eliminate the position, allow the administrative assistant to continue to work with the town, the HR person to achieve that goal, and then -- but I'm afraid if we leave it in the budget, we're kind of stuck with it because that's how they'll be working. So I'm going to move to eliminate the position of HR, director of HR, and leave the remaining HR assistant administrator in place at a salary of $50,000.
I'm sorry, before we go on, I'm confused. There is no HR director here.
It's an HR administrator.
Okay.
51123.
Okay, let's see, administrative assistant.
Right.
Okay. Well, on this list, I'm just working on this list, it says human resources administrator.
Which list? I'm sorry.
Oh, I was using your budget. Okay.
It's almost halfway down.
It's like the fourth, fifth in the file on that.
Okay. Then is the appropriate motion to reduce the salary of that position to $50,000 as it has been with the same responsibilities that have always been had?
If that's a motion you want me?
What I'm trying to achieve is we don't need a human resources administrator at $75,000. We function without it, and we can keep that person, that position, the way it is now, and continue to work with the town.
I mean, I'm just -- well, wait a second on the motion. If that's what you want.
Second.
Okay. I mean, I'm going to give my opinion now. I don't -- because this is Beulah, the pupil services director, full-time, she's not going to be an HR person anymore. This HR administrator will be taking on far more duties than she has done in the past.
Maybe that's not part of the plan that I'm suggesting. That's all.
Does anyone else have any comments? We need a second. Do we have -- we do a second? Okay.
So, you know, any other year, I might agree that we should leave them separate, but we're in a serious bind here. And we're facing, you know, significant cuts to staff that directly impact the students. And respectfully, I think that while some of the large-scale reorging that was proposed, you know, might be a nice idea, this may not be the year to do it. So I understand where Michelle's going with this, and I am going to support this motion because I think we need to, I think we need to stay a little more status quo for some of these things.
Mr. Kemp.
If someone were to be hired for this position, they would expect, given the workload, to be paid something like the $75,000. And I don't know that anyone would respond to a $50,000 job posting, given the responsibilities that it has. So I'm concerned about that. But in your explanation, you said eliminate the director of human resources, or whatever the appropriate title is here, and -- forget the verb you used, and make it work with the town. I'm not sure how this is supposed to -- what did you mean? In your reasoning, you said that somehow we were going to work with the town to get the work done. How is that supposed to happen?
I think the person in that position is an administrative assistant.
Right.
And I think with the assistance of an administrative assistant and working toward what Mrs. Bush was saying, that we would like to see those, the HR position at the town integrated with the board with the support of that assistant. If they're planning to move that administrative assistant into director of HR, then she must have some skills. I have to assume that, or she wouldn't be moved into that position. So I'm saying that rather than bumping up a salary, we need to work toward combining the town resources with the board resources with the support of the HR administrative assistant.
Well, I guess I'd want to know if the town were ready to accept that additional work in response. We could pass all motions in a row if we want and say, "Well, we're going to work with the town," and just call them up on the phone and say, "Oh, by the way, we're going to be, you're going to be doing more of our workforce." I mean, I can't see that happening necessarily. They may say, "We'll do it," and they may say, "No way." I mean, before we vote on something this important, it would be ideal if we knew what the town's position would be regarding taking on any work responsibilities that are currently done here at the board side.
If the person in that position is talented enough to take on the position of director of HR, then can't we assume that that person working with Mrs. Beulah would be able to manage the HR needs until we can do something more permanent, like an arrangement with the town where we find that we actually do need a director of HR? To Mr. Stansel's point, I don't think that we have money to be doing those kinds of, making those kinds of administrative changes when we have teachers that we're letting go. So I was trying to work toward a way to take care of the needs of the system with a little less money and a little less administration. So you're right, Mr. Kemp. It's not just call up the town and say, "This is what you're doing." It's with the, maintaining the position as it is with the idea that perhaps during the year, they can start to combine efforts, they can learn from each other. Mrs. Beulah has done the position, she just won't be, it won't be her full-time responsibility. But those responsibilities can be taught and shifted to this HR administrative position with the assistance of the town HR person. They work together now.
Just as a point of clarification, there is no, Mrs. Beulah was the director of HR part-time this year. There's no director of HR in the budget. The person is an HR administrator rather than administrative assistant. We have probably saved over three times her salary this year, just with the work that Mrs. Beulah and Mrs. Schnell have done together. It would have to be posted. It's a new position, so Mrs. Schnell has no right to a new position. She knows that. She, you know, I know, she's working on certification right now to be on par with the town. There are huge buckets of work that the town, as Mr. Kemp indicated, that the town is not experienced in. They do nothing with our certification. They have licenses, we all have licenses. We have plumbers, we have nurses, et cetera, same as the town. But the certification, those things are gigantic that the town doesn't have. And so my request certainly would be, if this was going to happen, to, we took, I think, 10 or 12 or 18 months to determine that the director of public works was looking at, was overseeing our maintainers. That was a long contract. I would certainly want to give the town that same opportunity to have that conversation. But she, but Mrs. Schnell herself does not have the rights to the administrator job. She is, she has to apply for it. We have to post. It's a new position.
Can I ask for clarification, then? In the budget book, it shows Cindy Schnell $50,000 for this year and zero for next year.
Because that position doesn't exist anymore. And so if you look above that, four or five inches, it will say administrator, and there should be no name there. She's not guaranteed a position for next year. That's why it doesn't say her name and why there's no money there.
So we would need to eliminate the position.
Her current position. Her current position's been eliminated in this, in this budget, has been eliminated.
Right, but we can undo that, is what I'm asking. And my motion would undo that.
These budget cuts that we're going to be making, I understand that this one is one that we have some uncertainty about. But we do have a dollar amount that it would be its value. And although we would like to have everything, all the ducks in a row and everything like that, there is a possibility that the amount that we want to pay for an HR person is $50,000. And we've just reduced the budget to, you know, down $25,000. Before we, before we, you know, decide that's exactly what we're going to do with it, we can have conversations with the town and work on that process. And at this moment, we can just say, "We will reduce $25,000," which will free up some money, maybe to save up a little bit of teacher or something. So we could table that motion and go to a motion to just reduce $25,000, knowing that this is a possibility that we might do that.
For the chair, just to Mr. Stansel's point about not dealing with, messing with the status quo this year, just remind the board that we did already reorganize central office in this budget. We did lose one and a half positions in this budget, and this position was a key role in that. As you know, I'll be taking over the HR functions next year, starting July 1. And with that, I did go to an Affordable Care Act seminar with Ms. Schnell. And the amount of information there alone for our employees is significant, and there are significant fines associated with that if we make any mistakes. So in that one instance alone, that we are going to have to have due diligence, and with the size of our employee force, I also would recommend that we hold on to this position as whole as it currently is in the budget. Again, strictly just because of the sheer number of employees we have and the different types of employees we have, from hourly to salary. Just so you know, if we have our hourly employees, including our substitute teachers, that work over a certain amount of hours, then we have to offer them a health care plan, an affordable health care plan. And that is something that we need to stay on top of, or else there are significant consequences for the district. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to add? Mrs. Russell.
Just a couple of questions. When was she certified to take this position?
I'm hoping by the end of the school year. If she's, I'm sorry.
May?
Thank you.
Of this year.
Any other questions, Tom?
Do you have any other questions?
Oh.
No, okay. You said questions. Florals. Okay, Mr. Kemp.
I'm not arguing the town's position, but if I were a town councillor or in the town government side, I might possibly be unhappy with the board of it because we're, what we're saying is, well, we have some more work, and we'd like, and we'd like, we would like to save some money here to save teachers and to lower the taxes and all of that. But what we're going to ask is the town employee to get involved, and that town employee would certainly smell the coffee and say, "Hey, there's a whole bunch of money that they reduced from their budget, and I would like to be paid more for the additional responsibility." And so we would be handing the town an employee problem because here we are saying, "We've got $25,000 we're going to reduce, and we're going to go ask town staff to do it." I just wanted to mention that because I just can't imagine that they'd be too thrilled with that prospect.
Mr. Stansel.
Well, Mr. Kemp, they certainly handed us an employee problem. Pardon? They certainly handed us an employee problem by whacking $600,000 off of our budget. So, you know, part of the complaint that we heard was, "We don't work enough with the town." Well, we're asking to work with the town. And, you know, I, again, it's not an ideal situation, but every dollar we save that we can potentially save teaching staff, I think, is worth exploring.
With the permission of the secretary, I'm going to withdraw my motion but replace it with another.
It's done. You don't need it.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to move to reduce account 51111 by $25,000.
51111 to $25,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Excuse me, I can't find it. Where is it?
It's in central administration.
If the number's not put there, David, it's under human resources administrator, correct?
About halfway down the page. $75,000.
On the first column.
Human resources administrator.
She's reducing the general control. I have it on this page. Right, she's reducing the general control. It's not on there.
Administrator.
Yeah, but she's not specifically reducing the administrator. She's reducing the account, which is the general control account, by $25,000.
Is there any more discussion on this? Oh, wait. Mrs. Beulah would like to say something. Will everyone speak on this?
Thank you for allowing me to express my thoughts on this. I just would bring you back to a year and a half ago, we had no HR department at all. And there was a distinct need to create this department. So you, as board, agreed to create my position half-time, two half-time positions. So I'd remain as the director of pupil services and director of human resources. In that year and a half, there have been, there has been a tremendous amount of work that has needed to be done. Mr. Burke talked about one little tiny piece of it, which is huge. I would also bring your attention to the fact that when you started the budget process, you approved November 10th, 2014, what the budget priorities were going to be.
going to be. And one of those was to establish a full-time Human Resources Director position. That was a completely separate position and the full-time People Personnel Director position. I applaud you for that. I understand why that went away because of funding. I believe that administration was fiscally responsible in trying to address the needs of the district in changing the HR position into what it is in your, in your budget request right now. I can tell you that Cindy Schnell works like a dog. She and I worked together, and probably in the last eighteen months, I've spent more than half of my time doing HR because there were, there were functions that were not set up. This week is vacation week, and for, you know, for some, if you choose to take it, this week she and I are working to put together an employee handbook, something that could have, should have been done a long time ago, which we just have not had time to do in the last eighteen months, literally. We work long hours, and, and we are cleaning up and setting up practices that are going to leave this district in good standing for years to come. But the effort that, it does need to happen right now, and I understand collaborating with the town, totally understand that. Right now, Dawn Maslow does not have the time to collaborate with us. There are times we call, and there are times that she calls back, and, and she calls us for information. She is working around the clock as well. She has no idea what our over six hundred employees are doing or not doing. She manages the pension plan for the town, which some of our employees are part of, but separate of that, they do nothing, none of the HR functions of this district. We have many, many more employees than the town does. Many. And complex, beyond certification, different bargaining units, non-affiliated employees. I really, when we, when we cut the original HR Director position out of here, my concern was the work that Cindy does, she'll continue to do, and she'll continue to work like a dog, who she does, but she needs to have the authority to make those decisions without, without me there. So Jeff is going to take on some of those. But there are employee investigations that go on, there is employee reporting that goes on, we're responding to CHRO, we're responding to unemployment, we're responding to workers' compensation. There are procedures that have been set up in place that have saved this district money and continue to improve the work that we're doing here and which are, which is saving you money. I just think that we need to continue that work. We're not done. There's still plenty of work to do, and I just think, I would, I would strongly urge you not to do that because I think there's a lot of work to be done. And I thank you for allowing me to address.
Mrs. Aron, I hear your comments, Patty, and I think they're all very valid, but I would guess that if teachers and other staff had the opportunity to support teaching positions, they would be just as passionate about it. And if, and if those decisions, those priorities that we came into our budget with were before we got cut one point two million dollars, so things change. And I, I hear what you're saying. I would never suggest that the position is not a valid position. In my mind, I need teachers. And this administration has made it work in between the expertise that you have and the responsibility that Jeff has taken on. I would think that with Cindy Schnell as a support person, as you described her, that you'll make it work. And maybe next year, we can think about doing something differently, but I'm not willing to do that at the expense of a classroom teacher.
Any other comments? Mr. Kemp?
It may be that we are all trying to figure out ways to save classroom teachers. This may not be the most prudent way to do it. The goal of doing that is admirable, but the discussion tonight has focused on one possible solution when, in fact, we've got hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars where we might otherwise go. This is probably one of the most dangerous places that we would want to arrive at, given the potential that we have for not handling our employees properly. All of the teachers and all of the rest of the staff that need to have their benefits administered properly, it's, it's a very, very difficult job, and I, I don't know that we want to play with fire. You could almost, you can more easily get me to cut something that's bricks and mortar and hardware and technology as much as I would like to have us do that than it would be to take action in this way in order to get to the budget economies that we need to get it. And we need to get it six hundred thousand in this hour, and we've got twenty minutes left.
Mr. Stansel.
Just as a point of clarification, while I agree we have to get to the, to the number, I don't believe we actually have to have the line items completely sorted out here in the next twenty minutes. My recollection is we've, we've had budgets passed by, by the voters several times and then gone back and actually had to adopt the final number to whatever line items we had left. So I understand your point, Mr. Kemp, and I, I agree with it, but it may be that we, we actually don't get all of it figured out tonight.
Okay. Any other comments on this issue? We do have a motion on the floor. All those in favor of a motion to cut twenty-five thousand dollars from account number five-one-one-one? All those opposed? And Mr. Stansel, there's a motion. Okay. Mr. Kemp?
I'd like to understand how the solutions to, that Dr. Conway has advanced here by going to the Alliance funds for the psychologist and wherever else Alliance is referred to as the solution. Because I'd like to understand what it is that we were going to buy or in the past year that we had purchased. Just because the Alliance dollars are there doesn't mean that it's just sitting there for us to go cherry pick. I mean, clearly, we're not going to be able to do something else. And I'd like to know what those something else's were or would be, or both.
That was, yes, thank you. That was quite a few questions. The positions that are moving, the kindergarten position is in fourteen-fifteen in the Alliance grant. We had, in the binder here, it is in the local budget, and so we're just returning it to the Alliance grant. The danger there is in two more years, when the grant falls off the table, we won't be able to fund the kindergarten teacher. The school psychologist for Skinner Road School is a new position, and so, and so the kindergarten teacher is not taking any more Alliance dollars away. We would have probably spent it on something else, but it's not taking, and it's not building upon the, the total that we were spending in staff. The school psychologist, we had a school social worker doing a different district-wide position that we are no longer going to continue for next year in the proposed plan. And, and so we would put the school psychologist in there. So dollar for dollar, again, this would not increase the number of dollars we spend on staffing and salaries in the Alliance District Grant, but certainly, we could have spent that on other things as well. Technology would be one thing that we have spent a lot of the Alliance funding on. Mr. Burke, we just started to meet. The first draft is due within a couple of weeks, so the Board hopefully will see the final draft before school is out. So may I ask, Mr. Burke?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
All right, to the Chair. This past Alliance grant, we spent funds on, as you recall, the classroom libraries, who sent a significant amount of money, as well as training for Reader's Workshop from Columbia. And we wanted to make sure that teachers had the resources available to them to implement the Reader's Workshop. We had funds, other funds associated with professional development. We had funds, obviously, for technology, as well as the funds for the current personnel that are in the Alliance grant and will continue the Alliance grant next year. This next year, some of the ideas, we'll continue with professional development. We also purchased this year our new MAP assessment through NWA, which, again, you know, talking about good data in the hands of our teachers. We just had, recently had a training in that, and it went very well last Monday, and teachers were very excited at all levels, K through, K through ten now. Teachers are very excited about that. So we will continue with that. We also, this year, purchased our new student information system, Aspen. As you know, that's got moved into our local budget. That is the core of what we do in the district in terms of maintaining our student data, so that's important that we make that in our local budget. But we do have some ideas for the next year, mostly it's around technology. We make sure that we do our replacement plan for student desktops, get some more Chromebooks in the hands of our students. In addition, we have a separate technology grant, if you recall, that will get us wireless in our elementary buildings, we hope. We also are looking at more smart board installations at the middle school and high school, LCD projector installations, the language lab at the high school, and et cetera. So we are still continuing professional development and looking at technology.
Mrs. Aron? Going to move to reduce the budget by ten thousand nine hundred eighty dollars for other supplies and materials.
Is there a second? Is there a question? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor? To Manas. Mrs. Bush?
I'd like to move to reduce the budget by one hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-one thousand forty-five. Little letter, little numbers. Out of the PPO, HMO, medical insurance.
Is there a second? Mr. Kemp? Any discussion? Mrs. Aron?
I'm going to support the motion, but it makes me a little nervous because that's a one-time shot. I mean, and then we're, we're setting ourselves up to be in the hole. So it's a desperate time, I get it, but I'm going to support it because I can't suggest where that one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars should come from otherwise. But I think we should be very aware that we're setting ourselves up for next year.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? To Manas. Thank you. Mrs. Bush?
I'd like to move to reduce the substitute teacher account by twenty-six thousand, ten dollars and fifty-five cents, please.
Is there a second? Mrs. Aron? Second. Any discussion? I have to make a clarification. If you recall, that is contingent on the additional reduction of teachers. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?
I'm opposed.
Motion carries. Okay. Okay. Mrs. Bush?
I'll keep going. I'd like to move that the school psychologist be reduced and by fifty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it. My implication, that means you're going to the Alliance grant to fund it.
I didn't explain it in motion.
I mean, not that I'm in favor of that either, because we're also setting ourselves up for a fall in two years when that cliff hits.
I understand.
So by taking this six hundred thousand dollar cut, we're really being set up for a bigger cliff than we had hoped to ever have to experience.
Any further discussion on this? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Just.
Yes?
Sorry, it's in the order. Nor in that motion did it say that they were going, it was going to be moved back to Alliance.
That's just the understanding.
Well, that, doesn't that have to be part of the motion?
No.
Because all you did was reduce the budget.
Because we haven't figured out our Alliance District funding yet. Can we pass that later?
Okay.
Or can I say no?
Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Aron?
If the Board would tolerate, I'd like to make another suggestion on, on the lines of saving a teaching position. We have a full-time, we have budgeted for a full-time out-of-district Administrator, and I'm going to suggest that if that position remains a half-time position, that this Board has discussed in the past, the principal at the Loveland Hill School participating in some of those special ed responsibilities. And I continue to think that Mrs. Buell has, she was, I'm not quite sure how to say this. She was compensated based on additional responsibilities, and that compensation remains in place, although she'll be doing Director of People Personnel and no longer HR. So I'm wondering if that wouldn't be reasonable to ask her to work with a half-time person and accomplish what needs to be accomplished for out-of-district, along with the Loveland Hill principal, and reduce that count to where it was this year.
I just want to clarify, I believe it's a full-time position. How should I describe it? It's a full-time position.
It was K through, I'm sorry, K through twelve, special ed, I'm sorry, K through twelve, special ed was half-time this year, correct? Mr. Dianzanti's position was half-time.
And he was only six through twelve, and Dr. Pasell was K through five, so it was a full-time position, was supervisor of special ed, two halves together. And out-of-district was also a full-time position. One person happened to have that position as well. Another point of clarification, when Mrs. Buell's position goes back full-time in the union, her salary will change. So once this budget is, is passed, she will be back in the bargaining unit for the administrators, and her salary will be reduced. So the original plan was, if we had, we hoped she would move into the HR Director. That position went a long time ago, so I don't think that's been changed. I haven't looked recently. But she will be back in the union. We can't negotiate that salary with her again.
So the one thirty-nine, two eighty-seven will not be the, that's what's in there, but that's not.
Right, and that, that was because when the budget was first formulated, what was it, when we were looking at the Director of HR position. And so that's what, that would have been commensurate with what she made until the Board negotiated that salary again. But now that she's going back to the Director of People Personnel, she'll be in the, in the budget at whatever the Director is, same as Director of Teaching and Learning, whatever that was in the contract. Mr. Kemp?
Well, have we taken the cut to reflect that change in, in dollars yet?
No, we have not.
We have not?
No.
Okay. And Michelle's comments had to do with also engaging the Loveland Hill School principal in doing some of the out-of-district activities, which seems like a reasonable request. So could we understand why that might not be a good idea?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Basically, having the Loveland Hill School principal contribute some of the work, work product in working with some of the out-of-district placements.
Out-of-district placement is a full-time job, and so is the principal of Loveland Hill School. She's, she's actually doing IEPs. She's certifying IEPs for us. So that is an administrative job that Dr. Pasell was doing for quite a while, and Mrs. Buell was doing for quite a while, and now she has taken over that position because she can do that from her office or after school and in the evening.
Well, I, I have to say, when we initially went to the Loveland Hill School concept, it was our expectation, frankly, that there would be more than ten students in it, one way or the other, by bringing students from out of town or realigning some of our own. And certainly, it has, let's say, broken even, okay? That's fair to say. What we were spending, we're getting back by not having to spend it out of it out of town. But I'll also say that we had an expectation that the student headcount within Loveland would be greater than ten. And it's, it's fair for us to say, having to pay a principal a full-time salary for that position is not what we had in mind. And to ask that position to help us with our financial challenges is a fair, I think is a fair ask. Now, to say that it's a full-time position and leave it at that, dismiss it, it's, oh, well, that's it, ten, ten students, full-time job, I don't think that sits well with the majority of the board. So I don't know where we're going to go with that, but I think we need to go somewhere. And if that position isn't freed up to help us budget-wise, I think it shouldn't. So somebody better give me an ass and argument as to why we're paying that kind of money to handle ten kids.
But she already is doing some special ed work by doing, approving all the IEPs. She's already doing that in addition to her job.
How many IEPs? There's only ten kids?
Oh, no, she does the whole school. The whole district. And then we have all the three hundred special ed students.
This person is handling three hundred IEPs?
That's correct. She clears each one of them. If I could make one more point of clarification, you are absolutely correct in that we break even. We budget just about five hundred thousand dollars and we pay just about five hundred thousand dollars. I would say that also means we save about another five hundred thousand dollars. If all ten of these students had to be outplaced, it would cost us much more.
I understand that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was... Thank you.
We're, we're okay with that, but we, we also thought there were going to be more students than ten. Now, if, I, I did not realize that there were three hundred IEPs that the Loveland Hill School principal is very much involved with a day-by-day basis, so, all right.
Mr. Stansel.
There's not a motion on the floor currently, correct?
No, there's not.
Thank you. Given the time constraints and the obvious need to have continued discussions on many of these budget items, I would like to make a motion that we reduce the Board of Education budget by four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, four hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars, which is the remaining amount required to get us the six hundred thousand dollars that the town removed from our budget and with specific line items to be determined later.
Is there a second? Second? Any discussion? Comment? Mrs. Aron?
Does that mean that it will, that the remaining dollars to be eliminated will come back to the board for discussion, not to the administration, but back to the board? Is that a given in your, in your motion?
Absolutely.
Mr. Kemp?
Yeah, and I just want to say at this point, in, in this deliberation that we're undergoing, I, I think it needs to be understood by not only ourselves, but others, that we have not gone to a financial well. That has always been our option and we had chosen not to do that. And that is the open choice program. Most of the school systems in this region take on roughly one hundred kids, some two hundred, some fifty. We take on five. The amount of money that we do not bring into this school system that would not go through the town at all, they wouldn't touch it, it would pass through directly, is frankly a staggering amount of money. But we made the decision that we thought that those problems that would come to us from Hartford would end up costing us a lot of that money and certainly a lot of grief and aggravation, and that those kids would be elementary kids, that many of whom would end up at Lake Street School and our other elementary schools. And I'm talking about a million dollars that this board, year over year, has decided it would be best for our school system not to go tap that well, that the state is trying to insist that we take each year. Other school systems have done it and we have had, had the fortitude to send a letter to the state commissioner and say, no, thank you. We could have done that. We could have solved some of these financial problems by taking on those kids. And then we would find out, as some of the towns have, that it's not a free ride. But I don't think the general population understands that very important decision that we have made year over year, and I think as a collective group here intend to do in the near future at least. So now I'll vote for this motion, but I, I had to get that off my chest, I'll tell you.
Okay, Mr. Stansel.
Thank you. I actually totally echo your comments, Mr. Kemp, and, and I believe when we discussed it in early March, we actually said, depending on the budget situation that we faced, that we may reconsider our decision not to accept any more students. So I absolutely agree, it may be a conversation that needs to be on the agenda for our next regular meeting.
Mrs. Bush?
It pains me to even think about cutting the amount of teachers that we need to cut to get to that amount. So I'd like to charge the superintendent, Mr. Picaro, the assistant superintendent, and the board members to continue to look for ways that we can save teachers and before we make the final cuts. I will support it because we have to do this, but looking for those creative ways, I commend Ms. Aron for, you know, trying to make a difference. Sometimes we, we look for things and we don't know the ramifications of what would end up happening if we made those cuts. And that's why we need to continue to look. It's not a done deal that we're going to cut all those teachers because it's a very difficult thing to do that and still have the education programs that we do in our schools, the very good ones. So until we meet again, I, I really would push everyone to keep looking for those ways where we can cut that doesn't take away our staff.
Anyone else want to speak to a motion on the floor?
Mrs. Aron? We'd be setting another budget workshop.
Are we willing to do that? Or we could do it out of a board meeting. What? We could do it out of board meeting.
In, in hour pieces, it's kind of... I, I understand there are already set dates, but these hour pieces might be, might be a little more difficult. And may I ask for clarification from Mr. Kemp? We, we talked about choice and we said, no, thank you. I understand that. And are you suggesting that we should not be doing that or you were explaining to the public why we, okay, why we say, no, thank you, because we could be taking on more than we're, we don't handpick students, so we get what we get, and then they cost us more than what we're reimbursed for? Okay, thank you.
And, and if we should make the decision to add more students, depending on the number, we might need more teachers.
Right.
So it's a catch, right?
Tom?
It is a catch, twenty-two, but I agree with Mr. Kemp. And the reason why is we never know, even when children move, when students move into the district, what type of students we get. And if we can, you know, have our budget a little bit more, plus give kids an insight on how wonderful a burning school system can be, I would definitely like to look at that again.
All right. Anyone else on this motion to cut four hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars? To be decided where it comes from later. And all those in favor? Jim Annes. Thank you. Now, we need a motion to adjourn the budget workshop. Mr. Stansel?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Mrs. Bush? Second. All those in favor? Yeah, thank you.